Uh, twenty twenty-five. The time is six twelve P M. I'm sorry. Six twelve P M. That's what I was looking for. Uh, please, please join us for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Lee.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Speak it out. Good job. Geez. Geez. Yeah.
Hear them yell it out like that.
And they shall lead us. Uh, Christina, Quorum, and proper notice been given?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there an agenda update, Tom?
Yes, sir. Um, I, uh, I would like to add a brief presentation by Jose Boscon from Waste Management. Uh, if I could add that after Eustace Junior Panthers, so item three point one five.
Three point one five.
Um, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners before us, approval of minutes for our May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five City Commission Workshop on Eastern Utilities and our June fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbody.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft.
Aye.
Commissioner Holland.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins.
Aye.
Okay, Tom, coming up to presentations.
Yes, sir.
Chief.
Yep. We got a presentation tonight from Eustace Junior Panthers. I brought the Happy Gilmore check. Actually can't cash this one. Uh, Eustace Junior Panthers, Coach Johnny, Coach Kyle, we're doing a great job with these young kids. Last year we gave them ten thousand dollars. This year we're giving them ten thousand dollars. It's all fun, the youth football program that they're doing here in Eustis, doing a phenomenal job with these kids. And, uh, I gotta tell you, uh, it's first class. And the city, we couldn't do it without the support of the city commission and everything that they do. Uh, uh, supporting us with the field and everything that improvements they do with the field. We gotta stay near the art facility, uh, right here on Bates Avenue, so. With that being said, further ado, we'll do the check presentation. You guys want to hold it?
We have a senior here moment here.
He's a veteran, he's a cub, he's a warder. That's the type of commissioners you got here dedicated. Come injured, still show up and be supportive of them.
All right, and have a camera.
Okay. It's the type of thing you look to.
So if you were to.
Two minutes, two minutes.
Took your bow. I don't want to stop like that. I convinced you.
I want to take this time on behalf of the Eustace Junior Panthers Youth Football Organization, once again, to say thanks to each and every member of this council for continuously supporting this young program. And, and I mean that. I'm not running for, uh, any offices, I ain't grandstanding, I mean that. Uh, since nineteen ninety-three, uh, this is as first classes as it gets. I've been around the world, I know a six and I know a nine, and it now feels like we're getting a nine. And I really appreciate being a part of this. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Chief. Everybody hates the police until they need them.
You think so?
Yeah, I know.
That's good to know.
I, I just want you to understand that this is a lot of pressure. I'm very honored to have our boys and girls wearing the Eustis Police Department's logo. You guys don't see this here, but on the broad, these kids walk into another arena, they look in the back of the sponsor, and this ain't the local pick and go.
Yep.
This is the City of Eustis Police Department, and that comes with a bang. At the same time, that comes with a lot of pressure. The guys like me. I have to uphold this program with respect to this community. I want to appreciate you all for just, now, just thanks for just even having us right here on the front street. You know, where folks can see these kids, make a loop around, hey, what's this happening? I get my kid involved, it, it's been first class. Thank you so much.
Yep. Eustis is a great city, and it's all because of people like you and the community and what you do to support these kids and support programs. And I can't thank you enough for what you're doing for these kids. And these kids, one day, are gonna come back and be standing up here maybe as police officers or coaches or Commissioners or Mayor, or maybe even President of the United States. And they're gonna come back and remember this. So, thank you, we'll continue to support you any way we can. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it all.
Thanks, Kyle.
Good seeing you, Kyle.
Okay, uh, next up, presentation from.
Jose Boscon.
Where did he go? Oh, there he is.
Mayors, Commissioners, uh, I'm Jose Boscon, representing Waste Management. Uh, I wanted to give a quick report on the first three months that we've had the new services. Uh, everything has gone really well, very few, uh, complaints or any comments. Uh, we address anything that your customers would, would require. And, uh, and we're happy, just thank you for that continuing, uh, relationship that we have with the city. So, uh, I just wanted to come and thank you for that. Also, I'll take a, a moment and just say, whenever you hear that we're not the greatest country in the world, those kids sure we are.
Yeah.
Right? The way they say pledge of allegiance.
Yes.
You know, that's something. So, you know, from an immigrant coming to this country and becoming an American, this is, it just, it gets to you, you know? So, but, uh, and, and the great city of Eustis, what the Police Department is doing is everything, you know, we all are part of this community, and we'd just be very proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Uh, next up, we have Optimus Energies, no, I'm sorry. Uh, Chief, there you are.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we'll, we'll get through this pretty quick. We have quite a few presentations today. Uh, Fire Department, we've been waiting for this for a while, so we have, uh, a lot of people to get then. Some of them aren't necessarily, uh, coming out of probation, been out of probation for a while. Uh, so I'm gonna go ahead and call up five, five of our firefighters that are gonna get then today as firefighters. Uh, they've been firefighters with us for over a year, so that's why they're getting then for off probation, and they're full-fledged firefighters at this time. Gage, can I get you to come up? Johnny, can you get him up? John? Alexis? Aaron?
Alexis just made a year. Yeah, I feel like she's been around here forever.
When you, when you hired the Eustis Fire Department, you go through a task book, you go through a, a, a series of trainings. Uh, all these, all five of these individuals have completed that, they're off probation, and they're fully, guys, they're getting the overtime, unfortunately, they're getting the mandatory overtime too. But with, I'm gonna go ahead and swear, you guys, are you ready? Okay, as I read this, we already went through this, right, Gage, we're good? Okay. I'll get you guys to kind of the half circle, and, and on Bible, I believe in the Bible, and another hand up in the air, please. All right, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jonathan.
Having been, been appointed to the rank of.
Having been appointed to the rank of.
Firefighter in the Eustis Fire Department.
Firefighter in the Eustis Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Florida.
Of the State of Florida.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of such rank.
The duties of such rank.
According to the laws.
According to the laws.
Regulations and orders.
Regulations and orders.
Governing the Eustis Fire Department.
Governing the Eustis Fire Department.
And that I will obey the orders.
And that I will obey the orders.
In directions of.
In directions of.
My superiors.
My superiors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I did this over thirty-five years ago, so.
Um, with that, this is the emotional part, so I'm gonna have all, all five of you move over. And the first one I'm gonna have come up is, uh, Gage Whitaker's dad, Paul Whitaker, if he could come up. This is the fun part. So, one of the traditions we have in the fire service is, uh, every firefighter gets to pick somebody, you put his badge on his shirt. So, in this case, we have a legacy firefighter, his dad.
He should be pretty good at that. Yeah, there you go.
Get a picture? Johnny, you're the next one up, and I believe he has his father pitying him. All I have is dad here, so. Uh, McDermott, can you come up front, please? He's a unique individual. He is going to have, please come up to him.
Oh, everybody's got a script.
And Mr. Donaldson is actually his new candidate. Alexis.
Hi.
Been a long time coming, right?
Yeah.
It's been a long time.
Sir, come on, this, uh, Verodasman, Darius?
Yes.
Okay. We don't snicker, Darius. We are, we have a bunch of paramedics in here, that's. Now, this kid, can you come up front? And I believe you have your family coming up here.
Putting those, putting their release makers out.
Right? Where, where they all at? Come on. We saved the best for last, kids are great.
But I did. There's, but she's so awesome.
Oh, you're not gonna let the sun do it? Come on, over, screw it, hop over here. We're gonna take a big picture.
You get in, Chief?
What?
Shape your shoulder up, right up front.
I do that all the time, I forget, I'm actually part of the group. He's as bad as I am.
That's right.
Where the book ends.
Ooh, that's a lot of people.
We've got more.
Is that it, Chief?
Another set.
Yep.
One more. Another set.
Oh.
Oh, okay. I hate to tell you, but I got three more sets.
Okay.
We get paid by the hour.
Two over.
We get paid by the hour.
Engineer, uh, we have engineer promotion for that. Could I get, uh, Garrett Griswold to come up? And Mr. Beebe. Congratulations. These individuals, they've done with the department for a few years now, and they have, uh, reached all the qualifications that we have to be driving our big trucks out there. Uh, the last truck we just paid about one and a half million dollars for, so it's a big deal. So, uh, pretty important. Can you guys kind of form up a little half circle? Read your own Bible, please. Read your man. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, David Whittaker.
Have you been appointed to the rank?
Have you been appointed to the rank?
Of engineer in the Eustis Fire Department?
Of engineer in the Eustis Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Do solemnly swear that I.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
Such rank.
Such rank.
According to the laws and regulations.
According to the laws and regulations.
Orders.
Orders.
Governing the Eustis Fire Department.
Governing the Eustis Fire Department.
And that I will obey the orders.
And that I will obey the orders.
And direct, directives of my superiors.
And directions of my superiors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. And we have people coming up to ten them roll. Uh, Eric Griswold, you have Warren coming up.
Yes.
Fiance, his lovely fiancee. You're, you're in for a treat being in this stand. David Whitaker, your dad, where's he at? There he is. Another legacy firefighter. Notice that with the Whitakers? And. Eddie, where's your, we're just talking about. Coming up, Mr., uh. So, we're going to. Go ahead. Okay, you got it. Your skill.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Put a lot of bodies in here.
Yeah, I was quartered for my.
Just so that all of you know, we haven't had a captain in our fire department for about seventeen years, I believe. So, you're kind of the, at least, I can, at least ten years. Um, you're a great addition to our organization, and we're excited with the things that you're gonna bring forward to us. Are you ready for this?
Well, let's do it.
And on Bible, read your man. Repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, First Wellington.
Having been appointed to the rank of captain.
Having been appointed to the rank of captain.
The Eustis Fire Department.
The Eustis Fire Department.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Florida.
The Constitution of the State of Florida.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
This duty, the duties of such rank.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of such rank.
According to the laws.
According to the laws.
Regulations and orders.
Regulations and orders.
Governing the Eustis Fire Department.
Governing the Eustis Fire Department.
And that I will obey the orders.
And that I will obey the orders.
And directions of my superiors.
And the directions of my superiors.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulate. Where you at? Come on up. He's gonna be pinned by his lovely wife. He's still in command of the department, so he's, he's good. Yeah. Yep, I am, I am a blessed person. And Eddie, can you, can you come up, please? So, I, I wanna, uh, point out, this is actually my command staff. Uh, Deputy Chief Hiller, Captain Webington, myself, the fire chief, and this is our fire support coordinator. So, this is really our first picture together. The next one, we're actually gonna give some, uh.
Next one.
Uh, these are paramedic promotions. Uh, if I could bring, uh, firefighter Z up, firefighter Lorenzo, is he here? I don't recall seeing him. And firefighter Carol. I know Z is here. So, i- it's really important to point this out. So, we have a program where people become engineers, and it takes them two years to do so. It's a pretty big, pretty big deal, but the, the bigger deal is when they become paramedics, they go through two years of schooling to get this certification. We have three new paramedics. Uh, today, uh, you're the only one here, but I just want to present him with a certificate and recognize him for, uh, achieving that and a job well done. Thank you. We have one special word we just want to recognize real quick also. If you could come up, Lieutenant Williamson. Um, it's not very often that we get like this. Uh, I'm usually the old guy in the department. He did twenty-five years with us, which is outstanding. He's been an officer, uh, since I've been, been around. Um, he's, he's a, he's a pillar in our department, and we appreciate that. I just wanted to thank you, congratulate you, achieving twenty-five years. Now, now the last one. Uh, this is, this is pretty cool. Now that I have a really strong command staff, we have a captain, and we're doing a better job of tracking, only actually saving lives. So, we save a life, uh. Why you not walk, Halloween it? So, we have a, uh, uh, situation that happened back in March, uh, sixteen hundred South, uh, South Day, which is, uh, Top, Topps. Uh, somebody was enjoying their lunch there, they had a full-blown heart attack, the engine showed up, uh, the crews worked them. Um, and, uh, they're, the player dead on sight, and they put the monitor on him, they were completely dead. They brought him back to life. Uh, the person, a couple days later, walked home from the hospital. Around this, is living a great life. So, when we give this award out, there's a criteria they have to meet. I don't want you to think we're only saving one life. It's only one life that we have that actually met the criteria. Uh, th- these guys are making differences every day out there, but this is just one that we can actually capture and record. So, I'd like, uh, I don't think, uh, Lieutenant Beshaw is here, uh, Gage Whitaker, we just sent him, if he could come up. Uh, Nicholas Z, our new paramedic, if he could come up. Uh, Jordan Birkholder. Jordan Birkholder is actually one of our lead trainers, paramedics, and he's also lieutenant. And then, uh, did you hear Beebe? Where you at? Come on up. And then Jacob Lustow, he's gonna be, uh, he's one of our newest firefighters. Uh, I mean, you're like really new, right?
It was his first fall of months.
It, oh, it was his first fall ever. So, you've got a heck of a, you've got a heck of a, uh, uh, career ahead of you. So, with that, oh, here's your, I can't find my notes, I left it in the actual pens. So, this was act, this actually happened on March twenty-fourth, and it was in an ice truck. So, uh, thank you for that. We're gonna get a picture, and I'm gonna get out your pens real quick. Okay? So, they're gonna get a pen, now, the first pen I'm gonna give out goes to Lieutenant Birkholder. This is a, uh, different from everybody else's, because he has multiple saves. So, we, we actually upgrade the pen, and the more lives that you save, that you get. So, everybody else, now, I think, I know this is your first. It's the first one everyone else has up there. Okay. So, congratulations. Congratulations. You can picture that. So, thank you. And with that, uh, if you give us a couple minutes, maybe we get a group picture, and then we'll get them out of here, and we can start with the rest of the meeting. That's good.
Yeah.
Everybody can come up real quick, and let's get a photo. I, I know, really good chat. Yeah, the OG, come on. Do you have another one of these?
I'm gonna give.
Okay.
By the way, we have, we have, I think about twenty people here from our department. We only got like thirty people, so we have, we have two-thirds of the department here.
Feels good. And this is the first time, I've been on this so much today, this is the first day I had it.
And while that, while they're clearing out, I just want to say, uh, thank you for, uh, for letting us do this. This is a really big deal for the firefighters. It's a really great opportunity for us to, uh, let the public know that we're here, and thank you for the support, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
We couldn't do things like this without, without the support of our Commissioners and City Manager and Staff.
Uh, we'll give a couple of minutes for everyone to, to clear the commission room.
Did she need to use my wheelchair?
Yeah, she did.
She pointed some ice packs on there. She's really just rolling up.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Good. I know. Are you gonna bathe this thing?
That's the best one right there.
This is gonna help pressure, which is gonna get the water flow, which will help us only.
Yeah, that's it.
Feel right?
Yes.
Take your legs out, maybe, the more you can elevate it, the better. Higher, you can, you wanna put the second pillow there, that's a lot, but the more you.
Put that up. Put that on. There, that's it.
Fluids will flow.
Thank you so much.
My son taught me.
You could be his assistant, huh?
I was, I paid all the bills. To get his education.
Okay. All right, we'll get started. Uh, next presentation would be Optimus Energy Solutions. Ben? Uh, either one.
Good evening. Are we, yeah, we're on. I do quite a lot of these, but this is the first time we've had to transition from lifesaving pins to my stuff.
Energy saving.
Yeah, exactly. Uh, Ben Paloon, uh, owner of Optimus Energy Solutions, based in Mount Dora, Florida. Local business, my kids, my wife and our kids go to school here in Eustis. And, uh, I will try to be brief. We had a nice presentation there, I know you have a lot on the agenda. Uh, but I, I'll, I'll try to be brief, complete, leave as much for questions, uh, either here or offline that, that the commit, you as a commission would like. Uh, the reason I'm here is I, I deeply believe in the value of public-private partnerships across many facets of society. In this case, our company has a program that we have been rolling out throughout principally the southeast United States at the moment. Um, it just so happens that, that we are neighbors. Uh, I am, I, I've tried to back my belief in public-private partnerships. I'm the, uh, outgoing or immediate past chair of Lake Economic Area Development, um, that I was very fortunate and grateful to pass on to, uh, the CEO over at Waterman, who's probably better suited and, um, and certainly I was happy to pass that on. Um, we, we were part of the group that brought One Million Cups to the city of Eustis amongst other things, and so just trying to show our, um, engagement with the community is all. Uh, we try to be aligned with our partners by providing a no-cost service to our municipal and county partners. And what we do to, to be succinct, um, is we provide dedicated, no-cost electric vehicle charging amenities to cities, counties, states. And, uh, we do this through, through a partnership. In this case with Eustis, there's some unique qualities that I think make it somewhat straightforward discussion. Uh, principally, one of the things that, one of the first things we are always asked is, is what about parking? What about parking? What about parking? Um, because I know it's a hot-button issue for many cities. In this case, that's somewhat of an easy answer, because as part of this program, what we would be proposing is, or what we are proposing, is to bring high-powered, uh, fast-paced charging, much like you would see at, say, a Wawa, into the downtown area, in this case, Farren Park, and at the same time, removing the existing slow chargers that are scattered throughout town, actually capturing a little bit more parking capacity, I would say, I would call it universal parking capacity than currently exists, while upgrading the amenity. And as part of that exercise, the, currently, the city of Eustis makes an annual lease payment for those assets to take, they did that to take the maintenance responsibility off of the city, because they're a hassle to maintain, trust me, they do it every day. Um, and, and part of this, if the city chose to move forward, whether it be tonight or, or in discussion with, with attorney, and we have a city-approved, um, a municipal-approved template agreement, would be that those payments would go away for the, the, the payments that the city of Eustis currently pays for their chargers. So the city would gain a world-class asset amenity. They would recapture a few parking spots that are currently allocated for this scattered about the city, and they would do away with the, the payment that's currently hits the P and L every year, uh, for the city. So I think the easiest thing is, this is just a mock-up. It doesn't have to be final, of course. We work in conjunctions with utility companies all throughout the, the country. We're actually in the process of taking over Duke Energy, North Carolina's portfolio in North and South Carolina of these chargers. And obviously, this is a Duke territory, uh, as, as we heard in the meeting preceding this. Um, and so we would be proposing putting two, uh, fast-charging stalls for, for relevance, for comparison. These would charge cars about twenty-five to thirty times faster than your chargers do now. So people are in and out of there, you're taking up less parking spots, it's a higher quality of met, yes, sir.
How long does it take to charge them now?
Uh, to go, to, an entire, right now, you charge at about six, seven, let's say ten miles an hour. And these charge at like, let's say, three hundred, four hundred miles an hour. And, and it really, so it serves people that live in apartment communities, people that visit parks and recreation, that's a big one for us, because you go down, you spend forty-five minutes at the park with your kids. A massive segment that this amenity helps cities with also is serving rideshare, which is a bigger and bigger, uh, utilization, because almost all of these companies, in particular Uber Orlando, has massive incentives to electrify their fleets, cheaper to operate, et cetera. And so by having this type of fast charging, it brings more rideshare, object, you know, statistically, quantifiably, to the area, because then now they have the amenity. Um, and so it's, it's something that people would use. We try to match the amenity to the use case. There's a lot of multifamily around, a lot more multifamily coming. A lot of people use Farren Park, my, my family included. And so people would come and spend twenty, thirty, forty minutes there and be gone, versus now, they might take up a parking spot for a day.
So the ones that we have now, Ben, how long does it take to charge from empty to full?
About roughly twenty hours.
Twenty hours?
Yeah.
Okay. And if we do the new ones, forty-five minutes?
Yeah, forty, max, yeah, forty-five minutes, yes, sir. Yeah.
How are you able to provide it free of charge to the city?
Yeah, so what we do is we enter into generally their ten-year agreements with an, an entity, oftentimes public, in this case, sometimes private entities. And so we bear all of the cost, we do all of the utility work, we put the utility meter in our name, we pay for the electricity, and then we, uh, we capture the revenue from the stations. So it's a pay-for-use. Yeah, yes.
And, and would the cost be more than we're currently charging?
The, the...
What the city charges now?
I, I don't actually know what the city charges, because that's not been part of our purview. But gen, but gen, I think a direct answer to your question is slower charging is billed at a slightly lower rate, fast charging is billed slightly higher, but in every one of our agreements, we have to be in line with market rate. And there's a Florida hybrid average, and that's basically what we, what we charge. Yes, sir.
I, I, I think this is a great compliment to what, um, we're doing in, in, in promoting our city and in, uh, activating our parks and getting people to, to charge up and come take a walk in there. Um, this is just another great step for us, and it saves us money. Yeah.
How many spaces are you thinking in the park?
Right now, right now, we're, we would only take, we would actually end up taking three parking spaces, because most code requires them to be ADA, not dedicated, but just accessible with the aisle. Um, so we would take up three parking spaces for two chargers, but remove the six spots that are currently used for charging in the city.
And I'd like to see him, uh, work with whatever development we end up doing, especially on the hotel side, uh, to provide those services, to make it attractive for a place to stop to in, in, in Eustis. If, if we, you could have that conversation when the time comes.
Sure.
And, and Ben, this, once you put these in, these come up on the map for chargers?
That's correct. It's integrated in almost every dashboard. It's integrated into Google Maps and Apple Maps automatically, just through the backend APIs. Uh, and so any driver that has those and uses those tools, which is how they find them...
It would drive them to our downtown?
That is correct. It meaningfully drives traffic, yes.
That's the best part.
I, you know, I, I, I've, I've seen projects that Ben's done, and, um, very, very up-to-date with what he's doing, and I'm, I'm proud to have him wanting to be a partner with us as a city. So Ben and Optimus, I think they're a great company. I also appreciate his leadership in Lake County. Um, and those are the folks we need to be doing business with.
And he lives in the city.
Absolutely.
Amen. So I don't know what we need to do, but I would move motion, ask for...
I think we, we, uh, we direct Tom to...
Get it.
Are you good, yeah? Emily?
Yes, so are we, are we doing a contract with him? So that will be up to Tom and Sasha.
I would just like to know what the charge is for him as opposed to what we're paying now.
Right now, I think, I'm pretty sure we're paying two fifty an hour.
And I, and I know there's, you know, there are some towns that, that actually don't charge anything for residents that come, come charge the cars. I don't...
Well, we've been there, done now.
Yeah, we've tried, yeah.
And we, we've worked with a ton of cities and we've tried, sorry, sorry, mayor, we've tried to advise them all against that. That was interesting, twelve years ago, when most of these were funded with grants and there was, and, and they were trying to drive those folks to spend the money downtown. But, I mean, that's, you know, you're giving away fuel, really, at that stage.
And I think that one of the things that we've had is, you know, we've had the peo, people to come before us and they say, well, why, why are we paying, why are you paying for their, you know, the gas in their car essentially? So, uh, but I, I, I love the idea. And you, and you can only do, do those in Farren Park? You can't do one downtown anywhere?
The, 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 the big cost of these is the electrical infrastructure. And so clustering them, for example, we just put two downtown Ocala, and we're putting seven downtown Winter Park, and all of those are, I guess my answer would be, we have never done an agreement with multiple locations, because it becomes cost prohibitive.
Okay, thank you. Fine? I'll be good?
Let's go with it.
I'll be fine.
I said go for it.
Thanks, Ben.
And I, we, we'll, we'll work on that. I did want to, uh, answer your question. I don't know if the commission remembers, but we were, uh, we, we charge per, uh, hour for charging, but then we were debating how much to charge once a vehicle is charged to promote, uh, turnover. And so what we're charging right now is two fifty an hour to charge, and then ten dollars an hour once you've charged. So if you fully charge and you kind of hang in the spot, we're in effect penalizing you at ten dollars an hour.
I'm ready to go with that up. Dude, what do you, you do for that, Ben?
Yeah.
If there's an overstate?
Yeah, we, we give a grace period, usually it's about twenty minutes, because then people can wrap up, pay their bill if they're eating a restaurant or whatever, and then it, and then we go at about twenty-five dollars an hour, I think, is, is, is the penal rate. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Talk about motivation.
Yeah, really? Sasha, anything? Okay, all right, Tom, you wanna?
So we, uh, Sasha and I, uh, will work with, uh, Ben to put together, you said you have a template?
Yeah, we have, what, what I, I'm not speaking over you, what, if, if you're okay, I will send you a word version of our current municipally-approved, because it has the insurance taken out, you know, the, the Florida statute stuff, and then you guys could redline anything that you see. Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, thanks, Ben. Okay, next up, we have a presentation, uh, G three C two, Mr. Derrick?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh... Basically, I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to present what I consider my plan for developing the central business district. I'm Derek Wallace, I'm the principal, G three C two. What I want to talk about, the central business district is larger than three blocks, it's, it's expanded area. This is basically our major master plan scope, and I'll talk about more of that in detail as we proceed. I'm excited about being here, because I've been working with this project for over three years. It, it was a day that I got a call from Pam Revis, invite me over to, to talk to her and George about how to develop the three blocks. And basically, I, I said, well, let me go back and think about it. And I went back, and I came back to Pam, and I wrote her a nineteen-page, uh, letter to say, you can't just develop three blocks. You've got to develop the downtown district and produce a master plan. And basically, the master plan has been done, and we're basically, uh, indicating, uh, driving the development based on the master plan. One block parking garage and, and mixed-use townhouses, a block mixed-use and, oh, mixed-use and, and family development, a hotel. And I got that idea because of what the last time, that it might be better to hotel, be down by the commuter center. And I did some research, and it showed it should be. And then I looked at the commuter center. Uh, the commuter center, I'd like to convert that to the event center, just expand. I, I'll show you how we saved, uh, the total cooking unit over a million dollars, because we just expanded the facility rather than just tearing it down and starting from scratch. And then we have proposed to take the, uh, Clifford House Museum and relocate it. We have not made a decision, that's your decision, but this is how, trying to bring , uh, obvious to, to, to that particular thing. Our development team was in the packet. I know I'm not trying to go through everything, because you, you have a packet, I don't even know if you had a chance to, to read everything. We did, but we tried to be thorough, because I think you deserved that, and, and we, we as a firm have not given you the things that you should have got, but this is my take. The here and it is the parking garage and mixed-use, and that's my name, I just named it that. It doesn't mean anything, it can be called anything. But you've got two hundred and fifty parking spaces, hundred and fifty available to repay, uh, paid use. Ground-level retail, seventy-five hundred square feet, and sixty modern apartments. These are just pictures, renderings, to show you, it won't look like a garage. It is a mixed-use facility. About thirty, sixty million dollars in this, these are the ways that you obtain the financing. Based on, based on my schedule, maybe twenty, uh, thirty will be, when, when it be completed in January. Block two, we're talking about twenty, uh, thirty-five, uh, townhouses. Again, this is what, what, what we have, and we did a, a feasibility study for this, and basically it said, it's good, it can work. December, uh, twenty of twenty-seven will be the completion date for that, we go forward. Uh, mixed-use and family, block three, uh, basically it is a seventy market-rate apartments, street-level commercial space and retail, uh, community-oriented space, and parking structure with a hundred and twenty, uh, true-level parking structure within the facility. Again, showing you the, the picture, and we did a feasibility for that, and that feasibility study, which was in the packet, says this can be done. About forty million dollars, and again, just showing how it possibly can be financed.
Can you go back to that last one, please?
Yes. Here?
Yeah. Okay. Okay, all right.
Okay. Uh, so we'll project it maybe February of twenty twenty-nine. Uh, commuter center, that's, this is the area where I got that idea, yeah, from, from, from where council people that it should be on the water, about, be by the water. And we did that. And, and, and this is, this is a total government where you took, like, uh, the left-hand top building, it's what was there. And the one on, on the bottom right is what it officially looked like. So you've taken a older building, and because the money was not there to just build the total building, but you had square feet, we saved a million dollars, because they were able to do it in tranches. We're talking about possibly relocating, uh, the, uh, Clifford House Museum, rendering of the event center. Seventy-five hundred square feet expansion, rather than just tearing down, starting over, same site that we were locating the, the, uh, hotel. Uh, September of twenty twenty-six. The hotel. It couldn't look like anything. This is just rendered, so, uh, I don't like the hotel or anything. And, you know, as a part of what we're, we're doing, we are not trying to, to do everything, okay? I have never wanted to have, have exclusive rights to doing everything within Central Business District. Now I have a chance to say, I did not. Feasibility study for the hotel, about, about nine million dollars to build a hotel, May of two thousand, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-eight. Restaurant, really trying to, I think, to make the best of what, uh, use is to be. Five thousand square feet. Again, renderings showing what could possibly be there. Here we have one, uh, vendor was interested in, in doing the restaurant, uh, so we were building the facility and listed to this particular company, but there's no commitment to any, anybody, or anything, or anything, because that is something that has been worked out with the city in the development. September twenty twenty-eight, also for the restaurant. Farren Park. Now, this, this is one of the most important things that I want to really bring to your attention. Farren Park is your catalyst for growth. You've got to concentrate on, on, uh, Farren Park and... You've got to concentrate on, uh, uh, Fair Park. I know you're not doing something, I, I hear a lot of stuff about, uh, arenas and stuff like that. But this is your catalyst, this is the draw for people to come, uh, to uses. And that's what we gotta, what we gotta focus on is Fair Park. Uh, we're talking about continuous pedestrian, uh, promenades, uh, secondary walkways, active railway. Making it a place that people wanna come, come to. But most important also is marketing and branding. And as we were doing the studies and stuff like that, I volunteered to, to pay some of the money for marketing and branding. Cause I know how important it is. It's essential and sacred and public concern. It drives economic development and creates a distinct, uh, identity for downtown. That's what you gotta have. You gotta have something that's gonna drive, defines who we are as a community, captures unique, uh, strengths and values, creates a positive image. And, 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 and what, what I did, I went out to several firms to get a proposal because I thought it was important. What you guys sort of knowing what it would cost to market. It's about three hundred thousand dollars for three years and they put marketing branding for, for, for the, the, uh, for uses. But you need money, uh, also to do some of the things that they recommend. And I know you don't have money just sitting there waiting to market, uh, downtown uses. So through talking with the firm that we talked to, which I included at, at this, uh, proposal in the webinar also. Uh, they are being paid by CRA funds. That's just something for you to consider. Very important, understand the real estate master developer. They are the ones who are responsible for aligning the vision, financing infrastructure and stakeholders' interest. To deliver a cohesive, high-quality and community-aligned development. A master developer is the one who basically controls. What I'm scared of right now, uh, is that we're approaching a silo type approach. There's no focus on a goal of developing downtown uses. You just build a project, you put one here, one there. You got to work the, the waterfront, the, the, the marketing and, 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 and controlling the process. What I recommend is the rubber approach. Everything comes under the master developer. Uh, you bring in other developers who want, uh, do that. Nothing that I have proposed today says I have to do. There is just someone who, who could build a hotel, which I'm, I've been told there is, you know. We don't build a hotel, we've worked with them to do it. But you got to oversee, who's going to oversee the construction and coordination stuff for the development? So that's what a master developer does. They set visions, they understand feasibility and risk mitigation, uh, capital structuring and financing. Uh, and basically, that, that's more to report, uh. Didn't want to go through all the details, cause I'm sure you read all, all the information that we had. But I want to point out, you know, I've been involved with this project from, from day one. And even through, uh, the, the, uh, time that we were doing the master plan. Uh, it took a lot for me, everybody heard that, you know, there was a decision, and there was. Oh, and, and we got, got through that. When I stayed there, our business models were different. But I stayed there because I didn't want, s- speak, uh, Eustace City to be, be embarrassed by. Uh, G three C two going up. So I stayed and I talked to, of your staff and indicated I would stay to make sure it continues. And I still believe, I believe wholeheartedly in this particular project. You had the confidence in me, uh, first to order you guys' plan. I'm, I'm saying still have that confidence because Derrick Wallace believes in this particular project. And he wants to help, to partner closely with you, the community and other sta- other developers and stakeholders. This is a project that I, I see as an opportunity to really take, uh, uses to another level and make it a place that it wants to be. I'd now like to open up for personal answers, but I'd like to ask you to really consider going forward with G three C two.
Thank, thank you Derrick. Questions?
I don't have any questions, but I, I just want to say, Derrick, I know that you're committed. And, um, and I appreciate all you've done. I wanted to show the public the work that you've done. That book contains everything that he just condensed. And it shows the work that Derrick has worked hard on. Um, not only have you done that, you've put a lot of your own personal money into this project so far. So I just want to tell you, I appreciate it, no matter what the commission decides to do. Thank you, uh, for your dedication to Eustace and to Central Florida. I know you've done a lot over the years and I do appreciate that, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, I have, I have to echo that. I, uh. When I, when I got that book, I was like, wow.
Lot of work.
Yeah, that, that, that's something. Uh, a- and I appreciate the work that you put into it. And, and I, 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 I think what I appreciated wasn't a hard sell. Which, you know, that, it's like, okay, you, you gave me the opportunity to read it and just kinda take it in, so I appreciate that.
Well, I, I, I don't want to walk in here tonight with that book.
We appreciate it. We appreciate that.
I could see you walking here with that book and, and so we're trying to get it out prior and, and give you a chance to, uh, uh. Again, I want to thank, thank George because if I've never been called over to talk about this, I wouldn't be standing here tonight. So I want to thank you, George, for, for, for doing that. Uh, but you, you're not gonna find anybody, anybody more committed to wanting to see this happen. And I'll work as hard as I can. If you go forward with me. If you go forward with me, I'll show you that, uh, we, because I'm looking at other things. People are looking at just building, building. I'm saying you've got to do these other things. You've got to, to develop, expand, uh, uh, Fair Park. You've got to, to market and brand the city uses. You've got to have controls in place and not just have all, all these things. The city, I don't think has the capacity to be managing, you know, all these different, uh, entities. But I think, uh, the door is open. Uh, I am not looking to say I gotta do all, all of the things. What I presented to you to, uh, today was basically what I could possibly do. But if there's other opportunities, like deals that the city, you make those decisions. But I, I was trying to convince you that I have the capability of doing what you asked me to do. But at the same time, I'm, I'm, I'm very open, uh, it, it's, it's your, it's your, your ball, it's not mine.
What's, what's? Go ahead.
So, um, Derrick, I, we do, uh, really appreciate all the work you put in. Is, but is Jerry still involved or no?
No.
He's not?
No.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I walked, uh.
We have a letter.
Get to him. And, uh, he walked the next night. The next day he walked. I got everything signed. The person that's running, G three C two, who had to keep that in place, is Derrick Wallace. Derrick Wallace gives you my commitment to stay with your project and work as hard as he is to get, to get it done.
Derrick, what's the largest project you've done?
Seventy million.
How much?
Seventy million.
Seventy million? And what was that?
Uh, uh, the development of student housing in the family.
Okay, alright. How long did it take you to do it?
Well, let's see. It took, it took about nine months, uh, to, to do the, do divotures and, and, and the, the drawings and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm.
And then it took about, uh, twenty months to actually build. Other facility. It included, uh, dorms and included a, uh, dining hall, we call it a hub.
Mm-hmm. Okay, alright. Have you done anything locally?
No, sir.
Okay.
The facilities, Pam, you were beautiful.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we were up there.
We, yes, sir.
Okay, alright.
I think that there is a lot that we've been presented tonight because we had, at our meeting at four o'clock, we had a great presentation. We've heard from Derrick. I think we have got, uh, now, put us and refocus us back onto a page. And I think that's gonna be something that's gonna take a lot longer than me giving a commitment that I'm. I'm comfortable with going with tonight. That is my opinion. Um, I think we're gonna have to sit down and talk again as a commission and refocus ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, yeah, I think we need to, to kinda give Tom, figure out how to give him some direction. And come up with a timeline when we want to do it.
Sounds like a workshop.
No.
July nineteenth.
I'm gone. Oh.
It's a, it's a lot to consider, so, you know, we need to, we need to do what's best for Eustace, so.
You know, and as, you know, there's a possibility to do a hybrid.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'm, I'll go ahead and say this, cause I said it before, I don't. I don't know if having one, one person do everything is probably the be- the best. I think, I think every lottery development should be, should be opening up for bids and, and have a little more competition. Things have changed since we started all this, so.
You know, you, a- and, and you, you, you're right. And, and my concern is, is. If everyone's building at the same time. Yeah.
And I think we have to identify what do we want first. Um, I think we, I talk about a garage, that's probably the most imminent concern that we have. And kind, we, we, I think we as commissioners need to decide, what do we want to do? What's the most important thing that we should start on? Cause building all at one time will just blow up the downtown.
Well, I mean, we, we, we could be in charge of when we put out the RFPs, when we want to stage, stage the development, so we would be in charge of that, I think. Um, we could, we could do a logical progression of from here to here to here and just, you know. But, once again, we have to do that as individual pieces, not as a large, not as a large development.
And, and maybe that's the conversation that we need to have. Do we do, do we do each block?
Mm-hmm.
So.
But how are we gonna do that?
I think we gotta be driven by the, uh, if I could throw, uh, my two cents in. I think we have to be driven by the project at hand in front of us. A perfect example is what we heard earlier. That's, that's, uh, something that definitely should get our attention. So, that's a project I'd like to see us move forward on. You know, I, I, as Derrick said, and, and thank you for the compliment, he, you know, he, he came when we called him. I think, uh. Think the partnership could have been better, but, uh, uh. At this point, I, I am in agreement that we need to look at each project as it comes forward. I think I see him more as a, um, and just to explain myself as a, almost a consultant driver of giving us a vision, but. I read his agreement twice and it took me two and a half days. And, uh, I've got about a hundred and eighty questions on it. Uh, there is some deep, deep things in there that we would need, uh, we would need a good, long workshop to just even understand. I don't think we're in the business of operating hotels. Uh, I would love to be the charter boat captain for the hotel. I think Michael will make a great front desk manager, but. I, I, that's, that's not where we need to go. So, the proposal for us to own the hotel, for us to operate it, it's just, it's not. I mean, it's funny, but it's, it's not, cause this is, this is the most important thing in, in my world right now, other than my family, obviously. But, uh, um, I, I, I think I'm, I'm with you guys on each project, opportunity, what makes sense, what our community is. You know, and, and, and following through. We don't want to shut down downtown in that package. It's an all at one, all at one, definitely don't want to do that. Uh, so, parking's back on the central lot. I'm, I'm not gonna go down my hundred and whatever, but, um.
Thank you.
I appreciate, I appreciate everything and the time and the effort that he puts in and, and they're. Very well still could be a place, but it's not gonna be in my, if, if it was up to me and I'm just one of five. On a grand, everything to one person kinda scenario.
Well, and, well, and I think that's what he's saying. He's, he's fine with that, but I, and, and, and I agree with Mike. He, you know, he, he's, he's, he's stuck with this. Uh, he's put his own money into it, more than some. And, uh, uh, I, me personally, I think that there is a place for it. Uh, and, and I wanna, I, I'm just putting that out front.
No, and I, and I agree, but I think, I agree, but I think we need, we need to take a step.
Yeah, we gotta figure it out.
Take a step back now and, you know, uh, we've presented a few other things. I think we need to take, take a step back and. And, and look at what we think is best for everybody.
There may be other people.
Residents of Eustace.
Yeah, there may be others. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. No, I'm good.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there may be other proposals out, proposals out there that we might consider. Um, you know, even in Daniel talking about what he wants to do and there may be other people who might be interested. I think we need to, um, get all of that so we can have a better idea of where we're going and what we're doing. But we need to, we need to come together on that soon.
Well, I think, uh, go ahead Derrick before I.
Well, I understand what, what you guys are saying, but, uh, one thing that, um. I think you, you're missing, somebody has to control. What you're doing, okay?
Hopefully that's us.
If, if, if you, uh, have all these different projects.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have the capacity, well, I don't think you have the capacity within the city to oversee all these, these projects, okay? And all I'm saying is, you know, uh, I think, uh, you thought that I wanted to do every project. What I, what I presented was a plan because you asked us to develop downtown. And I basically presented a plan. And I've also said that, you know, if somebody else has idea, uh, a- a- as the slide indicated, if there's another developer. It comes up to us to work together. Somebody has to control it and, and I guess, uh. You know, really understand the marketing and, and the, uh, putting together the expansion of, uh. Fair Park.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody's got to oversee.
So Derrick, are you saying you're that somebody who can help coordinate all this? Is this what you're saying?
That's, that's what I'm saying. You come on, uh, somebody has to control it. Some, somebody, so, so if you get another project, then they, they come to the, the, the developer, the city. Y'all still making all the decisions. It is no different. Then somebody's got to control it. If you don't work the marketing and, and the fair park, you know. At the same time, you're not gonna have people here to, to, to go to the, the hotel. You're not gonna have people here to, uh, utilize the restaurants and stuff like that. You know, all trying to get you focused on that it has to be some kind of control. And if, and if it's not me, it's just their work ethic, but it doesn't make sense to, 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 to do all these different projects. And expect the, the city to, to oversee the construction.
Yeah, I don't think we have the capacity. I don't think we would oversee it anyway.
Yeah.
We would, like, just for example, we would put out an RFP and say, do this one lot, then we did, we, then we let people commit. Then, then you're. Then the developer's in charge of it, not us.
We didn't go oversee the developer.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's why we have developer agreements.
I think it's important, Tom, I had a conversation with Tom, which I know is, would be. We, we are shifting a little bit with, with, uh, Rick in his position to oversee, uh, somewhat, some of the stuff where we need some guidance. And then we have Goman that we're paying for as well. Um, it seems like we got another, another consult, hang on, let me, hang on, we. Okay. Fine, I, 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 I.
I think it's different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's different.
I know.
And, and I don't think.
Just be respectful, let's all be, you know.
And I don't think that.
He's put in work.
I don't think that Rick, uh, Rick has the time to oversee the construction of downtown.
I, I think, I think the goal of the reorganization was that Rick would be managing city projects. And the city's capital improvement program. Um, that said, uh, public works and engineering would certainly be involved in what's going on in downtown. Um, but I don't, I don't see, I don't see Rick as being a development manager. Uh, managing the development in downtown, certainly involved.
We're not, we're, we're not gonna say, we're not developers either. We're, 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 right now, we're property owners that we're trying to develop, the developers do, do that. Anyway, Derrick, I, I'm, I know there's been, there's been a lot of changes since we started all this and honestly, for me, it's, it's taking a step back and regrouping. That's, that's all it is and, and we want you to be. That's, that's all it is, and, and we want you to be part of the conversation down the road, we really do. I just, I just don't know what that is right now, because, you know, once again, we've, we've been presented more, more information that we need to, we need to get through.
That's fair enough.
Yeah, I mean, we, we really do want, want you to be part of the, part of the conversation down the road.
That's fair.
Yeah, I think that, uh, we have, you know, cuz we know how long it takes us to get together to do anything. Uh, we've got to figure out. When we're gonna get together, and at this point, our direction for Tom is to find a date for us to sit down and talk, talk this through.
Yeah, we, um, we can work on that.
Okay.
I, I will say that it's, it's probably not, I mean, July seventeenth is our next commission meeting. I don't anticipate a workshop with vacation schedules and work schedules, I don't see something happening before July seventeenth.
No, no, no.
I, if you, if there's availability, we'll pull it together, but I don't, I don't think it's gonna happen.
But, I mean, but what would that workshop look like, I mean, what, what's the goal of that workshop?
You know, w- we're telling. A couple of different people that we're gonna get back to.
Okay.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, as Timmy brought up, we, we gotta figure it out, and it all comes back to, we got to sit down and we gotta figure it out.
And we can't, we can't just do it helter skelter or in these kinda meetings. I mean, everybody said it's only two meetings a month, we know that's a lie, okay, so, we need to go forth and buckle down and get it done. Because if we don't, we don't make any progress, yes.
Exactly, I agree, and, and we have to decide if, if we want to do the block, you know, everyone to do a block. We have to decide if we want a master developer, uh, yeah, I think those are conversations.
And I think we're gonna have conversations quite a bit more than some of us want to have over this development being one of the biggest, the, the biggest things we've ever done in our history of our city. So, we are gonna be talking.
We got one chance to do this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have to do it well, look at how we look back at other commissioners and said, look what they did, and they, what they didn't do, or how they didn't do it right. So, we've got to, we don't wanna be those talked about, we want them to say, that commission really did it well, and we can't do it unless we get together and really s- search this out and pour into it.
And my challenge to this commission is, let's get it done.
Yes.
Let's, let's.
And I think we've done more than, than, we've done a lot to be proud of in what we're doing and how we're focusing on the water. Uh, activation and, and, uh, what we're doing, uh, with community interaction and everything, we're, 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 we're doing, we're doing some great things, we gotta be proud of. But, yeah, I, I think, uh, we got a big job ahead of us.
Uh, so Tom, as soon as you can get everyone's calendar list.
I, I, I would think that, for me, it's probably gonna have to be in August.
I think August is probably good. Mike, one of you.
Pass around, we don't want anyone to know when to break into our house.
I'm, I'm good, once I'm back from DC on the sixth, I'm good.
Okay.
Mister Mayor, if I may, just briefly, something that I wanted to point out, um, earlier, we had the presentation, um, from Center Green, and. The, the proposal itself, uh, at the end mentioned a conveyance of, of property that was, would be within the CRA, it's owned by, you know, it's, it's city property. Um, statutorily, even though it was an unsolicited proposal, we would need to open that up for competing or other submissions, proposals from other parties. Because it is conveyance of city property, um, taking that into account and the potential, uh, waterman site involvement. Plus what we have going on here, uh, with G three C two and additional proposals for that, I mean, we're looking at needing to open, open this up, uh. For advertising and have a notice period there, be able to do internal reviews, presentations to commission, et cetera, so. Just kind of wanna bring that up and factor that in, that if that's the direction, um, that the commission wants to go in, I mean, we're gonna need to put this out there, and it may be beneficial to. Get the notices out while the scheduling happens, because if, if we wait for the workshop to then end up having advertised, there's, we really, I mean, the minimum will be thirty days, but we're gonna need more than that, so. It's just something to consider, I don't know, Tom, if you have something to add to that.
Is that necessary in an unsolicited, I didn't think it was.
It is necessary, it does not, um, a private, public partnership, uh, even if it's, if it's, uh, unsolicited, does not in any way. Remove the requirements of one sixty-three, three eighty, so it's, it's absolutely mandatory that we do that.
And there may be other unsolicited that comes forward, right?
Well, we know there is, there's going to be, I think Daniel has told us, he's coming forward.
Mister, Mister Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Derek.
That's what I'm trying to explain to you, as, as, because I, I would have a master developer, developers agreement. All of those would not have to go through a, a solicited process, you could bring them right in under the, under the master developer. And you can decide what you wanna do, that's as simple as I can put it, or how this can be done. It would avoid doing the unsolicited offers, you just bring that person, that, that agency or the company or whatever in, and cutting the deal. Because you won't have to go through a sus- this list, if you, when you go unsolicited, you have the, uh, choice of, uh, uh, not, not the choice, but. You could possibly have somebody else to come in or whatever, so it's not guaranteed you're gonna get that, that person if it's fairly done, okay? Uh, but as a master developer, sitting right here, you choose what projects, and you won't have to go through that because. As a master developer, I guess you could select projects, but I would select them based upon what you want. So, I'd just like to think that we, that's why, why you have your meeting.
So, you're thinking more of, not so much of us thinking, you're bringing a proposal to develop everything, but you're seeing yourself as the master developer. And the other, as we go things, you're overseeing it and keeping everything on track.
You have, you, you have a control, uh, environment where you're doing all the things that are necessary for this to be successful, you know. Uh, I'm sorry that, that, that what happened in the past, uh, I've never, I wanted to say do everything, but I had to put together. Uh, a plan that showed what I could do, and that's where I presented, not to say that, you know, I, I gotta do this, I gotta do that project. You know, like you say, I've heard there, there, there's, oh, oh, totally, there's the things that George wants, and it, it, so, all, all you have to do is bring that into the end. And if that's the way you wanna do it, you negotiate it, you work, and we oversee in front of it. There's something you're talking about, listen.
It's it.
Thank you.
Um, we are under no obligation at this point to pursue that avenue, and just based on all the feedback that I'm, I've heard. Uh, it may be better to decide what kind of RFP you would want, I mean, are we looking at proposals for each parcel, for the entire, uh, view? Something encompassing other areas, because it's, it's kind of murky right now, and I think that that would, is actually instruction that, um, is going to need in order to put that out there. The control aspect of it is something that the commission wanted to retain, so I'm unclear as to what the, the format of that is gonna look like, and of course, you do have, um. Goman York that's here to serve as your consultant to give you kind of that guidance, so perhaps with, um, some of that feedback from him. We can kind of tailor a, a better RFP as far as what the commission is willing to do and how to move forward.
I, I, I think I'd like to see us, um, if I could talk in general, I'd like to see us put out an RFP. For that community center, um, against what, uh, the Hoppers, uh, put forth, if that's what we have to do, and pick the best, best for Eustace. And, and, and in Willie's words, let's, let's get that segment going, because the famous line, chewing and walking, let's get that going over there, and we're gonna meet. Maybe in August and decide the next pattern, but let's get something going.
Well, I think that there's definitely. Uh, additional conversations that we need to have regarding that site, so, yeah, there's definitely additional conversations that, 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 that we have to have.
I kinda felt like we had a consensus on that, but I, I guess I was wrong.
One of the things I, I wondered about, what will we do, that community center is used a lot, and, and the community needs it, so what, wh- what are they gonna use? How are we gonna do it, how are we gonna provide services until that's done, that's a long time.
And, yeah, and that's.
So, I think what, in response to that, um, that is a very big question to be answered, it does get a lot of use, you saw. Uh, the file that Sam put together, uh, there were two hundred entries over the course of a year, so it was, it was booked or met, or used two hundred times. That said, uh, I want, I wanna be clear, that is our responsibility to figure out. Meaning, uh, the, um, the Hoppers have come forward with their, uh, proposal, uh, it is not their responsibility to provide a community center. That is our responsibility, uh, that said, I think we have that responsibility, and we need to have some conversation as to what we're gonna do there. Um, it's, it's all, um, there are a lot of moving parts, and one of those moving parts is. If we're committed to providing that reasonably priced event space, then we need to figure that out.
Right.
Uh, but it is our responsibility to figure it out.
It's definitely our responsibility.
No, I think we need that, I think we have a target idea where that's gonna go, so.
We do?
No, we don't.
We don't?
No, we don't.
Not that I know of.
Okay, um. So, the direction, um, I guess we will, I don't know what the heck we're gonna do. Uh, what, I guess we will just.
I mean, would, do we, do we just need to, we need to say how we feel? I mean, we, I, I mean, Derek, like I said, for me, it's gonna be, I'm not gonna continue the agreement, the agreement right now until we take a step back and look at all this, and, and we want you part, and we want you part of the conversation down the road. That's, that's me.
Well, I accept it, I was just trying to.
That's just me, I mean, if that's what, if that's the direction that Tom needs, I'm, I'm, that's, that's where I'm at.
I think Sasha was bringing up what we have to do if, on that side, and I had suggested that we go out with an RFP for that limited project, and. I guess that's something we gotta decide, I, I, it doesn't sound like the mayor's in favor of that, but.
No, I think there's additional conversations we need to have about the community center.
Yeah, no, I think we need an alternate place, absolutely, yeah, and I think that's something even to address with them and go through in a development agreement, and we have, I think, some other options.
But I'm not gonna give the go ahead to do that until we have our conversations, I, I.
Can they overlap? Because an RFP isn't a commitment, on a binding commitment, it's, let's get them in, let's take a look at them, we see something we like, we pursue, we don't, we pursue with them. We see something better, all this is happening simultaneously to what you're talking about, at any point, we can pull the plug on either one of them.
What if we decide we don't want to use that site, and you've done an RFP for it?
So what, we've done our, tons of RFPs that we don't, you know, we gotta know, we'll make that decision, if you see something you like, and. You know, five of us like, or, we move, we just get a stuff, keep the pipeline coming in, but no, we're not getting, yeah, we're, we're nading, we're not, we're not getting.
Well, and, and, and we still gotta have the parking conversation, let's not forget about that, along, along, along with all this, I mean.
We're stuck, let's move on.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Any.
Wanna say anything?
I'm sorry, we did meet with Finfroc, I don't know if you're interested in a quick update on that.
Uh, yeah, please.
So, Public Works set up a meeting with Finfroc, uh, they've updated the construction numbers on a, uh, ground plus two levels. At the, uh, the site, uh, east of Atlantic Coast Isle, uh, and, uh, six point nine, uh, million dollars for a very basic garage.
How many cars?
Uh, it's about two hundred and, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and eighty. Um, and then it goes up to about seven point four if you want, uh, facades and, uh, the brick veneer. So, depending on what you, depending on what you want it to look like, it's somewhere between six point nine and about seven point four.
But how do we, and thank you for that, but how do we know that's the right spot for the parking garage if we do something different in downtown?
I, I agree, it needs to be part of the bigger picture.
So, how are we gonna take care of that? How are we gonna know where we need to put all the, and who knows, we might have another surface parking, maybe we don't need a parking garage. Don't forget, there's surface parking on the other side of, uh, Grove Street, uh, where people used to park when the hospital was here, do we even need a parking garage? How are we gonna figure that out based on everything else that we're doing too?
Parking study. And that's how government works, I mean, I'm not, kinda hate to tell you that, but.
Do, can, does Finfroc do that, or?
Uh, no, others would do that, but I guess, I, I know it's cart, i- i- it's chicken and egg, but I, I guess I would like more. I would like to know more about where we're going with some of these downtown projects, I mean, we, we can break the three blocks up. Uh, but I'd like to know more about what's happening on the three blocks before I commit to a seven million dollar parking garage.
And I think that may be part of, right now, we're only thinking. One big project, and maybe we do need to sit down as part of our, our workshop and go block by block.
That's, I, I'm definitely for that, go block by block, open it up, when we're ready to open it up, open it up, and develop it in a logical way. That doesn't stifle the downtown, that has plenty of parking still available, that has parking for, uh, construction workers, that has, uh, room for drop, dropping materials. I mean, we are, we are, we are smart people, we, we can do this if we, if we do it the right way, and I think we should be in control of when we do what and, and, and how we do it. But, we are gonna have to have a talk about parking if we decide to do anything, and I, we don't know if parking garage is the best spot on, I know the master plan said it was. Uh, but they were thinking a hotel was gonna be on the, uh, lock facing, uh, Bay Street, if we do something different, how's that change where the parking should be? And do we even need a parking garage, we, there's, there's, we have a lot of, I think we have a lot of surface parking here that people don't realize, so. But Mister Mayor, um, it's getting late already, and I, I, this is a workshop discussion, so can we please move on?
Uh, yeah, 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 so.
Well, do we want to answer her question, and do we want to put out an RFP, let it come back, at least get that technicality out of the way? And we'll make a decision, we're not bind, and it's non-binding, it's.
Well, it doesn't sound like we have a consensus for an RFP to go out, um, for, for exactly what the terms of that would be, or. So, there'll have to be a workshop.
And, and then, yeah.
Yeah, let's do the workshop.
Would it be possible for us, we're always thinking about like a workshop in the evening, would it be possible to have a, a early morning breakfast workshop? And then try to get some things done, um, and then.
I'm okay with that.
And I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing, because we're always trying to do evening or whatever, and everybody's busy, and then, and then we could do it sooner.
We did mornings, we did Saturday mornings, we did, yeah.
Okay, uh, let's try, let's look at that, Tom, and we could probably do that before.
Yes.
What do you think?
I, in a couple of the doodle polls I've done, I've thrown out some early morning meetings, and there was not a lot of availability, but I, I will, I will send another one out with some morning hours and see if we can get it done.
Who's open for early morning? I'm open, I can do, I can do.
Five o'clock, let's go.
Five AM?
Five AM, let's go.
I think seven AM would be appropriate.
And, and I'm good with that, so we have four of the five, okay, all right, Tom, let's look for it, seven AM?
I think it's our travel schedules in the summer and all that, that's, that's created a problem, and one extra sentence I wanna throw in, I would ask that Tom consider. Soon as some of the dust settles, to go ahead and schedule us for workshops in twenty twenty-six, so that when we make our arrangements, we, we put the city first.
We, um, we've talked about that with the finance department and the budget work, the budget process, uh, we do need to get budget workshops on your calendar early.
For twenty twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, I don't want us to, I just, I'll end with this as my last statement.
That's what you said the last.
I don't, well, this is, this is dead serious, I don't want us to miss out. On people who might be willing to come into our city and drop forty million bucks, because that's a, that's an honor.
Well, you know, and, and, and I'll say this, I agree, uh, I appreciate the people coming in, but I'm not gonna rush. For the sake of, we are working for the people, and there are things that I wanna make sure that we take care of, there, there. Uh, answers to questions that I have, and I'm not gonna rush, uh.
I'm gonna quote you on that, you've been rushing us all along, I'm gonna quote you on that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not going to rush.
No one's gonna paint in haste.
Uh, and, uh.
I wanna walk and chew bubble gum at the same time.
No, we, we can do that, but I think this is too important to make this decision tonight.
Okay, thank you for that, can we get to the rest of it?
Uh, I think that, um, uh, Derek, we're going to have a workshop, we're gonna talk things over, but.
I just wanna thank you for talking to.
Okay, thank you, Derek, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next up, are you all still here? Um, let's see, the appointments.
House and authority.
The house and authority.
Got, haven't even got the audience prepared.
Yes. Okay, Tom?
No, I'm with it.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, I don't have anything prepared for, uh, Eustis Housing Authority. Uh, we have, um, one applicant for this position and, sorry, I don't have my glasses on, Reverend Brockington.
Yes.
Um, is, uh, currently serving and has requested to continue to serve and he is the only applicant for the position.
I'd make a motion that we approve him.
Okay.
Why does it say one commission?
I figured that title was.
Oh, I think that's what they call them.
They call them that.
Yeah, they, they call them that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Tom.
Okay.
Second? Was there a motion?
Yeah, George, yeah.
Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
All right.
Roll call?
Commissioner Asbady?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Brockington, thank you for, uh, uh, continuing to serve. Uh, we appreciate it. Uh, anything you'd like to say for like thirty seconds? Okay, thirty seconds. I'm counting. That side's fine.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Been serving on the board for Eustis Housing Authority since January first, twenty seventeen. It's been a pleasure working with the other board members and staff as well as we continue to strive to achieve great goals of providing safe, decent and affordable housing opportunities for residents. I'm proud to announce that the Housing Authority is pursuing some unique and exciting development initiatives this year. And I like to know that we, I like for you to know that we're looking forward to working collaboratively with the board as we begin planning and implementing new development projects. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, audience to be heard. Uh, Tom, do you have any cards?
I do, um, I have, uh, George Warren is representing both the Lake Community Foundation this evening as well as Bay Pharmacy. Did you wanna speak under audience to be heard or just in case there are any questions on the lease? Okay. I, um, and I have a card from Cindy Newton, uh, at the time of the item, so I do not have anything for audience to be heard.
Willie, George, do you have an update on Tom Hoffmeister?
It's not good. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay. Keep them in our prayers, for sure.
Tom had a massive heart attack.
Okay.
And he's not, not well at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, um, is there anyone in the audience, uh, that would like to be heard? Anne? All right, thank you. Okay. Uh, next up, uh, consent agenda. Is there anything that they won't want pulled?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call?
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Okay, next up, uh, resolutions, uh, Madam Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Uh, we have resolution number twenty-five dash forty-eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, authorizing the temporary donation of vacant municipal office space to U.S. House Representative for District Six for official legislative use, providing for conditions of use, findings of valid municipal public purpose, retention of city access and compliance with law, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Tom, did you wanna speak on this or?
I, I have nothing prepared.
Did not. Okay, well, I did a staff report. So Representative Fine, um, uh, he's, has provided us with a, the proper documentation, um, from Congress in order to comply with any ethical issues as far as having space and, um, it would allow him to be able to hold meetings with constituents, uh, on a nonpartisan basis as well as conduct official duties and I believe the space will be part, um, there's an office, uh, just for him and his, and staff. And, um, it would be in the police department.
Okay.
Are there any questions for me on that?
No, in, for the, the online search of him, does it show the police department as his address?
I don't have that information.
It should.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so.
It should.
Do we know that, Tom?
Okay, not yet. Okay, all right, okay.
But it would be by appointment only and it has to be during business hours, so it's not constant, um.
Okay, perfect. And almost all the meetings are with staff. Am I right, Mike?
What's that?
Most of all the meetings are with staff.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, no questions? Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Any questions?
Do we have any cards on the note? No cards. Um, anyone in the audience would like to speak on resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight? Okay, saying done, I will close public hearing.
Okay. I move, I move, uh, approval of resolution number twenty-five dash forty-eight.
Second.
First and properly second, uh, roll call?
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Next, we have resolution number twenty-five dash forty-nine, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement with the Seminole County Sheriff's Office related to the central, central Florida high intensity drug trafficking areas, HITA, program. Grant number H I D zero three two five G zero four seven eight dash zero zero. Chief? No, just kidding. It's all right. I assisted with this preparation. Essentially, um, the police department participates in, uh, this program which is, uh, a program that assists in avoiding or, uh, trying to reduce, uh, drug trafficking in the area and, um, the Seminole County Sheriff's Office received a grant that they're in charge of basically administering. So they're acting in a fiduciary capacity. We're one of the, of the members of that, um, group and as a result, for participation, there are certain expenses that are eligible for reimbursement. And, um, that is what this agreement outlines and it provides for the instructions of how to submit the receipts and all of that so that the city can receive funds, uh, to be reimbursed for those expenses. And, uh, it would be obviously a benefit to the city, so the police department is asking for approval uh, to enter into that agreement and give the chief the authority to sign it.
And it's only reimbursable funds, right?
Just reimbursable, yeah, it's a federal, uh, grant.
Move up, move.
What, one second. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I'd like to say that Sheriff Lee was one of the finest men that I know and the, uh, Seminole County Sheriff's Department is just a phenomenal organization, so.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on resolution number twenty-five dash forty-nine? Saying done, I'll close public input. Mr. Mayor?
Now I can.
Move up.
Okay, second. Move it properly second. Christine?
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
All right, please bear with me for this one. Uh, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero nine. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the city's land development regulations, amending section one zero nine point four Use Regulations Table to classify concrete aggregate shredder slash crusher as an industrial use and to specify the land use categories in which the use is permitted by right or subject to conditional use approval. Amending sections one fifteen dash three point one urban districts, one fifteen dash three point two suburban districts and one fif- one fifteen dash three point three rural districts relating to district regulations. Amending sections one zero nine dash five point four urban, one zero nine dash five point six suburban and one zero nine dash five point eight rural to update performance standards. Amending section one ten dash three regarding development pattern and design districts. Adding a new section to one, to section one ten dash four, building lot types to establish a single-family detached lot type which may be renumbered as necessary. Adding section one fifteen dash four point one B three to establish open space requirements for single-family subdivisions, multifamily, mixed-use and townhome developments. Adding sections one fifteen dash four point nine D three to allow storm, stormwater facilities to function as amenities. Amending section one fifteen dash seven point three to require street trees and to prohibit on-street parking on residential streets unless designated parking spaces are provided. Amending section one zero two dash twenty-one regarding site plans and preliminary plots, providing for legislative findings, providing for codification, severability conflicts, governor's errors and an effective date. Mr. Lee?
Can I just say ditto? Okay, as, as we talked about earlier, uh, based on the, the Kimley Horn workshop, uh, you know, we, we do have uh, draft, uh, architectural guidelines and does, development standards now. And, uh, you know, we'd need to change our land development code just so that we can roll out this particular program. As, um, as Sasha pointed out in, in the lengthy discussion, you can tell that there are a lot of nuances that, that, that have to get plugged into the land development code. But I'll try to just hit the wave, the wave tops real quick. Uh, again, as was pointed out, there is a, a new duh, uh, building type that will be the single-family, uh, detached building, uh, lot type and it's basically a hundred foot wide and in, in essence, it's a hundred foot deep, uh, maximum type sizes. That's in essence, ten thousand square feet. Uh, in, in reality, that would in essence require developers who are building, uh, subdivisions over ten lots to basically have four units an acre. That's all that they can have. A builder acre is basically forty thousand square feet. Ten thousand square feet per lot, uh, that in essence gives them four, uh, units an acre. Uh, we, we recognize that not all developers, or, or very few of them are gonna be interested in that. So in essence, how, how are we going to get them to, uh, to follow our, our new guidelines? Uh, basically by having, uh, them come before the community or, or the city com- commission, uh, and ask for waivers. And in essence, uh, by using that, uh, the waiver process, they will ask, uh, for, um, the, the building lot type, whether it be the house lot type, the, the homestead, the cottage, um, or, um, I think there was, uh, the estate size lots. Uh, and of course, the, the estate size lots are really in essence what the hundred by hundred are. But, uh, they will be coming to you guys and asking for waivers upon, uh, I, I guess the, uh, the, the process where they're, they're trying to, to move forward with the subdivision. Uh, so, uh, in essence, um, uh, we, uh, we, we are requiring them to, uh, to, to follow a couple of other things. Uh, we've got the, the cul-de-sacs. We're gonna try to discourage the, the use of cul-de-sacs. We're gonna try to, to promote more interconnectivity, uh, between subdivisions. If they choose to go sa- cul-de-sacs, then in essence, we're gonna make them have those as private streets. Uh, but if they choose to at least allow stubouts, uh, to adjacent properties, uh, then in essence, we will uh, accept those as, as city, uh, type streets. Uh, we also are trying to discourage double frontage lots, uh, in, in essence, trying to, uh, to prevent, uh, you know, so much crowding, um, and, and allow a, a little bit more open space, uh, on those inner sections. Well, as part of this, we're also looking at, at street trees. Uh, and, and of course, this, uh, was a, a, a discussion that, that we had early on before we ever had, uh, the, the Kimley Horn guys, uh, involved. Uh, we, we basically were, were interested in trying to have more trees in the subdivision. A, a typical lot right now requires three trees. Uh, in the past, what we've required is for them to have one in the front and two in the back. Uh, with this requirement, uh, they're supposed, the, the subdivision developer himself is supposed to be able to come in, uh, uh, for every forty foot of the, uh, the frontage on the lot, uh, he is required to put in a street tree. Now, he also may come to the city and ask for a waiver of the, uh, the, the street tree or, or a quantity, uh, to be decided by the commission if there are some, uh, unique circumstances particularly related to driveways and, and things like that.
You know, Mike, can I stop you for a second?
Yeah.
I actually took a picture of my neighborhood. It has a example of that.
Okay.
See how, see how nice that looks? That's what I'm thinking it'll look like once it's.
Well, a- and, and again, as, as part of, as, as part of the ask, we're, we're, we're trying to get them to, to basically look at doing the, the variable setbacks. And, and that's really what this is all about, is trying to, to vary, uh, or encourage them to do the, uh, the variable side, rear and front setbacks and including porches.
Sorry, just a second. If you could please text it to Christine or email it to her so that we have it as part of the record.
Yes, absolutely.
A- as we talked about earlier with the, the open space, uh, issue, uh, I think Tom alluded to this, the fact that, uh, we're, we're trying to get them more, the, the open space areas more centrally located, particularly when it comes to townhome developments or multifamily or mixed-use type developments. At least that way they're more centralized. Um, again, if, if there are unique circumstances, you know, obviously we can make provisions and, you know, right now, um, we haven't really had any major issues with, uh, the, the recreational facilities not being centralized, but, uh, we're also talking about stormwater. We talked about the, the stormwater ponds. Uh, we're trying to get, uh, more recreational activities a- around those stormwater ponds and then utilizing them. Uh, and again, we're also trying to encourage them to do more landscaping around those type facilities. The, the, uh, the off-street, on-street parking is, is another area that we're pretty much, uh, making adjustments to. We're, we're trying to, to limit that on these type of streets. The, the street, uh, the, the, the street types, uh, primarily are, are the, um, residential streets, the residential roads and the alleys when it comes to these type of subdivisions. One of the things that we did encounter early on was, was basically some concerns from, uh, some large property owners. And so what we decided to include in this, uh, revision was that all the, 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 the large properties that are in that suburban residential category that are over three hundred acres, uh, that they be, uh, responsible for doing a master planning effort before they're e- ever able to develop on those properties. And, and we have, uh, feedback from, uh, one large developer that he, he's good with, uh, with doing, uh, you know, best practices and, uh, and, and requirements that include, uh, you know, having, uh, charrette process, have, uh, development standards within the, the subdivision, covenants and restrictions and, uh, and, and other things that basically, um, I, I guess lend it itself to the, the better planning practices.
Are, are we still gonna have PUDs?
Yes, we will.
How's that, how's that differ than what we're doing with this?
Well, you know, the, the.
Cause that's, PUDs are pretty much master plan too.
That's true. Now, now, PUDs are generally are, are gonna wind up, or, or they can actually pop up in, in, in other districts. I mean, you can have them in urban residential districts. You can have them in the, uh, suburban, um, I, I guess, uh, well, not suburban residential, that's what this is, but you can have them in e- even the rural residential areas.
Other districts like MCR and districts like that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I like this one.
Ma'am?
I said I like this one. I don't know anybody else, but I just wanted to point it out.
Okay, a- and then of course, we've got basically the, uh, I guess the, the, the time to challenge. And in, in essence, each of the sections that, that are, we're trying to make adjustments to were basically allowing those who want to challenge us, uh, to have a, a ninety, a ninety day, uh, I guess, notice that when the, whenever this ordinance is passed, they have a, a ninety day period to, to contest or, or take the city, uh, to court in a court of competent, uh, or, or, or the court of competent jurisdiction uh, to, uh, in essence, uh, challenge us on, on these particular ordinances. So, um.
Why nineties? Is ninety normal?
It's actually short. Exactly, it is. We went on the, uh, longer side just to provide sufficient notice. Um, typically it could be thirty days, but we wanted to make sure that everyone had an opportunity to think of their options, maybe come to the city and get clarification as to how it could possibly impact them if any impact actually exists for them. In case I don't understand exactly what's going on, I thought it would, it's just better to give them a bit more time.
And Sasha, correct me if I'm wrong, but you, if you are interested in annexing into the city, you do not get the ninety day. It is only people who are currently in the city and currently have SR have ninety days to, to challenge this.
Correct. I mean, if you're not, this is only for those that are within city limits as, as of the moment the ordinance is passed.
Okay, so the last item that we included involved the, the table of uses or the use regulation table. And this was associated with the last annexa- not the, maybe not the last annexation, but this was involving the Sangster property. And basically, in essence, what we're proposing here is to include that, that concrete aggregate shredder slash crusher uh, in base. shredder slash crusher and basically allow it to be a permitted use in the general industrial and the public institutional as a permitted use and basically as a conditional type use in that mixed commercial, or mixed commercial industrial category, that MCR district that Mr. Sangster was trying to work on or trying to annex. We did notice this in the newspaper, first and second readings, and at this point, staff is recommending approval of this ordinance.
Any questions on this item?
Just, just one thing, Mike. The 25% that Cindy was talking about in the earlier meeting, are we good with what we're doing, correct?
At this point, I mean, I guess it depends on who you ask. I mean, 25%...
It was 25%, right?
It is an open space requirement in our code. It's mandatory that they set aside, that the subdivision developers have to set aside 25% of that development for open space. I mean, and that's...
And they can make that like between the houses and all that stuff or in front of the house. Is that considered part of their open space?
No, it really isn't, no. I mean, a lot of it is just, some of the perimeter property, a lot of them have buffers back there where, that they tend to become walking trails or walking paths. You know, the recreational areas, I mean, those are included as open space. And, you know, again, at the end of the day, 25% off the top is our requirement. So, I mean, it is a, you know, it is mandatory. So...
I'm being told that that's not accurate, but...
Irregardless of the accuracy, I mean, you know, we get criticized for basically how we interpret the code, but I'm here to tell you that basically, you can look at the site plans and they will show you, you know, they normally will put on the site data table that the 25% open space is there. And, you know, in the Development Review Committee...
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying, I'm confused.
I mean, you know, again, this, a lot of, and this goes back to trying to explain what our code says. I mean, it is in there as a mandatory requirement to include that. And developers or those who develop here, they do include those numbers on their plans. And, you know, for instance, like Hidden Cove, I mean, they had a significant area around that eastern edge there that, where they tried to save a number of the trees. And then they had, you know, the little area that included the actual park itself. And again, you know, the, that amounted to about 25% of that whole entire parcel. And so, again, it is, in some people's mind, you know, they may prefer us to go 30 and 40%, but at the present, we have a 25% open space requirement there.
Any further questions? Do we have any cards on the item?
I don't, Cindy, did you want to speak on this?
Thank you, Cindy Newton, unincorporated Eustace. Excuse me, I'm going to lose my voice. I would still ask that the Wakava study area be looked at more closely, actually look at the statutes, at the recommendations that came down and what your code was at the beginning. And actually, the recommendation for the Wakava study area was 60% open space when it first opened up for discussion. And Eustace wanted to be the city of open space. And also, as far as the impervious surface being restricted to 25% in the Wakava study area when it is high recharge, that has nothing to do with the scrub, any of the vegetation. It states high recharge. The high recharge soil is type A soil. It's really easy to determine. And please, take a look at that. We're losing our recharge currently. We are overpumping 40% for the Wakava area. And we're losing our river. We're losing our springs. We're overpumping, we're underrecharging. We've got nutrients flowing into it. So please, take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this item? If you could please come up and state your name.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jane Hefting. I live at 2006 Magnolia Circle, Eustace. I live within the city limits. I'm just kind of shocked that the city is thinking about taking on or annexing, I guess, properties with over 300 acres. You know, smart towns came and told us we need to be building up and not out. I don't understand the whole purpose of this new ordinance. If we already have planned unit development regulations on the books, I just think it needs more study. What's going on here? What's the motivation? Who wants these rules put into effect? Open space, 25% is not very much. And if you're trying to count retention ponds, I think that goes against the wisdom in other planning documents. Retention ponds are not supposed to be part of the open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close public input. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioners?
I just have one quick question. Mike, is a retention pond, I got to keep it simple, but is a retention pond supposed to be counted in that 25%? Should it, is it, does the statute say it does, the ordinance rather?
The ordinance doesn't say that it has to be, no.
And it doesn't say that it doesn't have to be either? So it's vague?
No, but what's interesting though is a lot of the, and this is part of what we were talking about earlier, when you wind up with a big stormwater pond in your subdivision that looks like it's a football field, it in essence becomes a playground for the kids, particularly those who want to play football, baseball, basketball, you know, that sort of thing, volleyball, soccer. I mean, it, the kids will find a way to use it if they don't have any other places to play. And in essence, you know, they...
So it's not clear whether it should be counted or, in your opinion, or not counted?
No, but, but again, what we're proposing is that the, the open space area, it may not be true open space or counted as open space, but it is, in essence, has been underutilized in a lot of the subdivisions. I mean, what we're trying to encourage is the, at least the aesthetics around the whole entire neighborhood by at least beautifying it and making it become an asset instead of a liability.
I'm just on the technicality of that.
And Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but the language we're adopting tonight says, if you're a developer and you want to use a retention pond towards your open space, you have to add amenities. You have to make it active recreation to use it as open space. So the language you're adopting tonight actually, actually makes the developer do more if they want to use retention as open space. So we're adding protections and we are adding amenities to subdivisions.
Anyone else? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 25-09.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Next. Oh, sorry.
We are past our two hours. How do you all feel about continuing or do you want to...
Truthfully, only three more things to do.
Okay, all right.
Okay. All right, we'll have presentation on ordinance numbers 25-10, 11, and 12. The first ordinance is ordinance 2510, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing approximately .60 acres of real property. At Lake County Property Appraisers alternate key numbers 397-7568, 395-7567, and 345-0680, located on the west side of State Route 19 along Ruth Avenue. Mr. Richardson.
This is a request for annexation, future land use and design district assignment for property owned by Graywell LLC. Guy Grayford is the applicant. This is approximately six tenths of an acre in size. It will bring that six tenths of an acre in from Lake County Urban Low to Suburban Residential and Suburban Corridor as the design district. Property is located just west of State Route 19 along Ruth Avenue, which is an undeveloped, basically a dirt road gravel road. And it is just north of the Autozone, they're just above the County 44 intersection. Aerial view there, as you can see, there's single-family residential along State Route 19, frontage. I think there's, I think there are four houses from the north of Ruth Avenue coming south. So there's, I think, one or two vacant parcels in between this parcel to be annexed and the nearest single-family, at least along Ruth Avenue. And then there are single-family residences across, to the west, Ruth Avenue. Property is in Lake County joint, or in the planning area with Eustis and Lake County. It does meet the requirements for voluntary annexation. It is directly contiguous on the south side of the property to current city limits. Original notice was provided to Lake County on May 16th, 2025. Newspaper advertisements ran on June 19th and on June 16th. The requested annexation does meet Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes as well as our own land development regulations and comprehensive plan regarding the annexation of segmental land use. Again, currently, Lake County Urban Low, which allows up to four dwelling units per acre, going to Suburban Residential within the city, which is our, basically our lowest typical suburb or residential land use district that we assign to properties at five dwelling units per acre. Actually, as you can see, to the east, that is all suburban residential. The future land use element is consistent with the surrounding area. It is the closest land use designation to the current existing Lake County designation. That Ford or County 44, State Route 19 intersection is urbanizing, has been urbanizing for the last several years. Essentially pointing this out and boiling it down, these properties are not impacted by wetland. They're generally not impacted by 100-year flood. They are not within the Wakava study area and they are in a low recharge potential for low recharge area. I say potential because the maps are generalized. The requested design district, again, is Suburban Corridor. That's kind of keeping along with the, with the rest of the surrounding area. Again, this is the generalized utilities. Water line is available on the east side of the property, so basically will be the back property line. And then at the intersection of Hazelton Road slash Ruth Ave is where the, it looks like a sewer stubout is. There may be additional sewer out there. The maps that I had possibly are a little bit old as well. Again, not really impacted by the flood. It does touch the front property line out along Ruth Avenue. Wetland, it is not, is not impacted by wetlands. Generalized potential recharge again is in that zero to four inch range per year. Just again, reiteration that yes, it is directly contiguous with current municipal limits. And staff is recommending approval for actually all three ordinances, 2510, 2511, and 2512 for annexation, future land use, assignment of the design district.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeff?
Any questions?
Do we have any cards on? Anyone in the audience like to speak on ordinance number 25-10? Seeing none, we will close public input.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance 25-10.
Second.
Do we want to wait for Commissioner Asbady?
Yes, he's locked out.
Good. It's a good thing.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Next is ordinance number 25-11, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustis Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Florida Statute 163.3187, changing the future land use designation of approximately .60 acres of recently annexed real property at alternate key numbers 395-7568, 395-7567, and 345-0680, generally located on the west side of State Route 19 along Ruth Avenue, from Urban Low in Lake County to Suburban Residential in the City of Eustis. We've had presentation. Are there any questions on this item for Jeff from the commission? Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on ordinance number 25-11? Seeing none, I will close public input. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 25-11.
Second.
Okay, motion property second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
And last is ordinance number 25-12, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the Suburban Corridor Design District designation to approximately .60 acres of recently annexed real property at alternate key numbers 397-7568, 395-7567, and 345-0680, generally located on the west side of State Route 19 along Ruth Avenue. Any questions on this item from the commission? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 25-12? Seeing none, we'll close public input. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 25-12.
Second. Okay, it's been moved property second.
Commissioner Asbady?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Sasha. Okay, next up, future agenda items and comments. Mike?
Just thanks, staff. Happy Fourth to everybody. Also, Miss Florida is next week, and we have our Miss George Fest, Jada Carter, in that competition, and we wish her the best of luck. Some of us will be traveling down every night to watch her compete in Miss Florida and hopefully bring back that crown this year.
Hopefully.
All right, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Emily?
Yes, I hope you can hear me. I would like to express my gratitude and thanks to the American Bloom advisors who were here. They received a tour. They were very impressed with all the new activities that we've accomplished. And the next time we see them will be in September at our conference, and hopefully we will come back with some good hardware because of the success of the things that we've done. They were very impressed with everything that we've done. I would like to express my gratitude and thanks to the city staff, merchants, the library, Trout Lake Public Works Department, Park and Rec, and Events Department. Without all of them, it could not have happened as well as it did. We also had a butterfly photo contest, and that was at the library, and the library has a whole wall put up. People were very creative in how they posed in front of the butterflies. I encourage you to take a peek at it if you can, and I think the library, for all that they've done to support us, and the different programs, that's another thing I wish more people would take advantage of. They do so much in their workshops and teaching possibilities. So I thank you again, Ann, for all that you've done for us in promoting American Bloom. It's going to get better and it's going to get bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. George?
All right, all right, well, it's all...
I was also had the privilege that Emily invited me to be around with American Bloom. And the more I meet with them, the more I see, and the more I see the responses from our residents and our constituents, the more I realize what a great, great program it is. Pam and I were, had the honor to be at the manufacturers of, in Central Florida's convention and get together on Tuesday. And we met, we met with quite a few manufacturers from the area and some from outside. And we've got a couple really good leads and a couple good meetings coming up. So I wanted to share that with you. When people are hearing about Eustace, I was approached by Seminole County's people, and they were surprised by our advancement and how well we were doing and that we competed against them for Opticon, who chose to come here over Seminole, Brevard, and Osceola. So I think that's some, a pat on the back that we all deserve as a community, that we're, that we're doing what we're doing. And especially a thanks to Lake Tech for taking a big, active role in that as well. They are a resource that just continues to impress me by the minute. I got a letter, like all of you did, from our county commissioner about getting together and chatting about JPAs and all of that. And I've, more as a civilian before I got up here, had mixed thoughts about up and down on that. But I do think we should give, each of us should give Tom some opinion about some of the things that are, that are on our mind for that. And I think we should go to that June third meeting. And I think there's a lot of things we need to talk about. Everything from enclaves to roads to monies to funding, to all of those things.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. I'm sorry, what did I say?
Thirty.
Okay. So I think that's something for us to certainly think about. Other than that, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, so I was going to mention that we've been invited to participate. I think all the municipalities in Lake County have been invited to participate. So we'll be going to that June thirtieth meeting. Wanted to, we got some good news this week, and I wanted to thank Tristan for hanging in with us, but also thank him for all his hard work and, of course, Representative Cobb for championing some appropriations projects. We got some good news this week. And also want to thank Continental Strategy, our lobby group, who's done a lot of good work for us on that. They've asked to come and do a legislative update on July seventeenth. So I've added them to the agenda. But again, thank you, thank Representative Cobb's office for all her work in Continental Strategy. Budget, we are continuing to work on the budget. I want to thank staff for all the hard work. We do have a budget workshop scheduled for nine AM on Saturday, the twenty-first. You do not have your budget document yet because we are still working on it. I don't know if you noticed, but Lori and Mary are not in this room because they are actually up in finance, still working on the budget. But we are going to get you your budget documents tomorrow. We'll bring them out to you, deliver them to you so that we can get started on that process with you on Saturday. I do want to point out that we are aiming for July seventeenth for a tentative millage. And so tomorrow, I don't want to say it's the beginning of the process because we've been hard at work, but it is the beginning of our process with you as far as budget. But we do have about a month to continue to work with you individually, answer questions, and sharpen the pencil. And then approval will be in September. So we will continue to have some time to work with the commission on budget. But thank you to the staff and thank you to the commission in advance for all your hard work on that. And then the only other thing we've already mentioned, we'll be having a trails update from Mike Stevens on July seventeenth. But I want to thank Miranda for all the hard work she's put in related to trails because this is a multi-jurisdictional coordination with Lake County, Umatilla, Taverries, and then at some point, the state, potentially the railroad. So it's a very complicated transportation project. But thank you to Miranda for all her hard work. And that's all I have.
Man, what a turn.
Nothing for me this evening.
May I ask one question, please? Does anybody, when is that light on forty-four going to be activated? It's just been hanging there. Is it ever going to be activated?
So the update that I've seen is DOT is working with Duke Energy to get the power to the light for it to be activated. That's what I've heard. I think I saw an email to that effect.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. I, I want to thank the vice mayor for sitting in for me while I was gone.
Yes, sir.
I listened in, and he did a great job. I may or may not have let him know that I was listening, but... Yeah, I did. I, speaking of Duke, conversations are being had. And I promise you to see. You know, I came home, you know, on Facebook, on Facebook, everyone complains about the polls.
You got the biggest one in your front yard.
I got the biggest one in Eustace in front of my house. So when you complain, I don't want to hear it because mine is bigger than yours. The, but I'm, exactly. But we are having conversations with Duke about trying to pretty him up. So because, and because of American Bloom, we're like, you know, we're doing all this downtown. And then, so we're working on that. Time, we're trying to get downtown done. We're going to have to devote the time to get it done. And I think we all feel the same way. It's taken us too long. So I just ask that everyone, you know, look at your calendars. And I know it's going to be tough, but let's start kind of, you know, buckling down and just getting, getting our downtown figured out. I think we come back every, after every other meeting, and we, with the same things. What are we going to do? Who are we going to be? Let's finally put that to rest and figure out who we are and what we're going to be. And a reminder, we canceled the meeting on July third. Our next commission meeting would be July seventeenth. And as Tom said, we have a workshop starting at nine AM on Saturday morning. And I've requested that we stay and get it done. Stay how long? We stay and get it done.
You see, Willie, I agree with you, but the problem we have is that we, we have made, a lot of us have made very important family-first arrangements. So we're torn between two lovers. You know, you're right. I agree with you, but...
I'm torn between two lovers every time Tom sends that out.
Well, at my church, they always say family first.
I mean, we can't, we can't...
I got you. I agree with you.
We can't, sorry. If we don't, if we don't get it done, we can't, we can't have like maybe just one backup? Because I could say, I know I've got family in town because I thought we wasn't having anything on Saturday. So Jamie invited all her family down from South Carolina and Missouri, and they're all at my house right now. And I had to give up all that time on Saturday, which I'm okay with. I'm just saying, if we get to the point where it's maybe we can't have one backup, one backup day?
Well, I liked what Tom suggested until noon because I have family coming also. And they come once, and they'll be here Saturday, they leave Sunday.
And actually, and what my worry is, is we're not, we're not getting the budget numbers probably until tomorrow.
That's my main concern.
So then, and it's going to be just probably reactive. We're going to have a lot more questions, and it's going to take us a little longer to get through everything. So, I mean, we all, we all do really put in a lot of time for the city. And I, and I don't mind putting in the time, but I think we should have a backup day. And I put in just as much time as everyone else. No one says you don't. But we've, we've got a deadline that we're coming up to. And we've got to get it done.
So if I, I'm sorry, if I may, the focus tomorrow will be the general fund because we do want to move forward towards a tentative millage rate on July seventeenth. So we will, the plan for tomorrow is we will do a big picture overall budget presentation. Then we will focus on the general fund. And then if we can get through the general fund, then I've asked that we start on utilities and stormwater and the road fund. So we are not planning to present CRA and CIP tomorrow. We will have to do that on another date.
Okay, let me ask you this. If everyone's concerned about it, do we want to start early?
How long do you think, I'm sorry, is, how long do you think you're talking about?
It's going to be up to us. We probably can't because it's already been advertised.
Yes, correct.
So...
I guess what I'm saying is, is that we will not be ready to present you everything tomorrow.
Saturday.
We need to, I'm sorry.
So we won't get it all done anyway?
So we need to, we'll be focusing on general fund.
Review it? I just...
General fund, we should be able to get through by one o'clock.
And it also allows us, think about it, we're getting, we're getting the book. And then we've got to spend time on the book. And then that's, and I want to be prepared. I know that, I'm glad we're only getting a segment of it.
Probably go get it done then.
If we get it done, we get it done. If not, we're going to get it done.
Saturday, you're going to get it done.
No, if I'm here approving it by myself, I don't do that.
Deal.
Well, then, I guess, I guess we're here till we get it done.
All right, bring your handcuffs.
Okay, anything else? Anything else? Okay, all right. Adjourn.